Dear God, we ask you to bless the city's leaders we have elected. Grant that through our discussions and decisions, we may solve our problems effectively. Enhance the well-being of our city and achieve together a fair and united society. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. First up is Ms. Simpson, will you please hold on?
Mr. Bills.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Ringo.
Here.
Ms. Dever.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Watchworth.
Here.
And Mayor Jansen.
Here.
We have Quorum.
All right, everybody should have gotten the copy of the minutes from October 15th. Any discussion, changes, corrections?
Motion to approve.
You got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you. All right, up first or up next is the annual audit report. John Chamberlain from Chamberlain and Owen, Chamberlain, Owen and Company are here. John, you got five minutes. That's the most I can do tonight. Wednesdays are not my finance night, so I'm sorry.
You wish.
I know.
She said that on Monday.
I did say it. It's every other day. Mike, sorry.
Yeah.
Only days that start with T.
Yeah, good luck, good luck with that, Mayor. I will try to be brief. My name is John Chamberlain. I'm a CPA, partner at Chamberlain, Owen and Company. We're a CPA firm in Erlanger that specializes in audits of governmental entities. We do appreciate the opportunity to do the works for the city of Villa Hills again this year. You've got a slide presentation. You've also got financial statements and the mayor really wanted me to just go through these like exhaustively.
Absolutely.
But I think I'll just hit the highlights since there's not a lot of exciting things going on financially in Villa Hills this year. So let's just start right here. First of all, I want to thank Craig and Jennifer and Mayor and Dave Baker from Baker Associates and just for taking good care of us when we're here. You know, we do ask for a lot of things and to get an audit complete and we require a lot of things from different people, so we do appreciate them jumping through a lot of hoops for us and taking care of Shannon and her team when she was here during the audit. We've issued what's called an unmodified opinion, meaning there's no modifications that are required to the opinion. And that, what that means is that after doing our audit procedures, we feel like that your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects with accounting principles generally except for the United States, and that's the highest opinion that we get. As a part of every governmental audit, we do a review of your internal controls. We want to ensure that your riskiest assets are protected, appropriately protected through segregation of duties, your reporting is appropriate for this city, and we found no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in those internal controls that were required to report. Also, a part of every governmental audit, we do a review of compliance, compliance with Kentucky state law, Kentucky by statutes, any compliance with debt agreements, grant agreements, and we had no issues of non-compliance to report as well. We did make, let's skip. Nope, no, I didn't skip. We did make two government-wide adjustments. These are standard adjustments that we make every year to gross up or gross down your SERs to their actual. Your SERs is measured at June 30th, 2024, so it's of the previous year. That's what gets reflected on your financial statements, and so we make an entry into your government-wide statements for this. And this year, you had a $33,000 net benefit to pensions. It's almost like a revenue, if you will, and $170,000 net benefit to your OPEB. And we'll talk about the SERs in a minute, but those positions are decreasing pretty rapidly. Your net liabilities are decreasing there. And then two unplanned general fund adjustments. One, we want to, we wanted to set up your opioid settlement, the long-term receivable and a related deferred revenue in the funds to be consistent with all of the other cities in Northern Kentucky that we audit and also with accounting standards that show that these long-term receivables, we know they're, they've been posted how much you're going to be receiving, that type of thing, over the course of the term, and so they wanted to, we want to make sure that's put in as a receivable in the funds and then also a deferred revenue in the funds and then a receivable in the government-wide statements as well. And then there's a new Government Accounting Standards Board standard out, GASB 101, that requires for your compensated absences, we've already had that in your financials, it's already been in there for years, but they want us to put the effect of the FICA and your pension in there, and so any pension that's due and payable, you know, that year or your FICA. So we've added that and we made a slight adjustment to include the FICA amount. Craig recalculated that and we included the FICA there. Also this year, because you expended over $750,000 in American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA funds from the federal government, you received these funds in tranches the last couple of years, and you've held them in your cash accounts and held them as deferred revenue. And you finally recognized about $820,000 of those funds this year and then expended those on some road work, on some capital improvements in the city. And so as a part of that process, we do an alternate compliance examination engagement to review the expenditure of those funds. So it's a shortened form of the Uniform Guidance Engagement that allows us to look at, make sure those funds are expended on the activities that are allowable and also the costs are allowable costs. And so we had no issue, even though that says independence, it's really the city of Villa Hills. It just shows how good you're doing.
Good for independents.
That's right. They wish they were Villa Hills.
Yeah, exactly. Copy paste is your friend and it's also your enemy.
That's right.
But the city of Villa Hills did comply in all material respects with the coronavirus state and local recovery, recovery funds program requirements. So no issues there to report. Let's talk some financial things now that's much fancier. And you see, the blue is your unrestricted assets at almost 5 million, the green is your unrestricted cash, about 4.5 million, and then the purple is your restricted cash right at about 1.3 million. You had about a $900,000 increase in unrestricted cash, about a $630,000 decrease in restricted cash, and that's mainly due to those ARPA funds that were sitting in restricted cash as well as deferred revenue on your books. So those, when those were recognized, that restricted cash was reduced. The General Government, the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFPA, has a rule of thumb to have somewhere between three and six months of operating cash on hand. So whatever your operating expenditures are for the year, you can take three to six months of that, and that's how much operating cash you should have on hand. For Villa Hills, three months is right at about 2 million, six months is right at about 4 million, so you have 4.88. So you have right at just over six months of operating cash on hand, so a good solid cash position. Your debt summary across all of your funds, the yellow are your current liabilities at $182,000, the blue is your compensated absences that I mentioned a moment ago, right at 183,000, and the red, long-term debt, that's zero this year. So your capital lease balance is at 79,000, that's all short-term. Your current liabilities decreased about $84,000, mainly from large decreases in accounts payable compared to last year. And then your compensated absences increased about $25,000 because of that GASB 101 that I mentioned earlier. The net pension liability is not on here because the other things wouldn't show up very well, but your net pension liability, about 3.87 million. That was about 4, about 4.45 million last year, so a $580,000 decrease in that pension liability. For all of our cities that we're seeing, all the special districts that we do, we've seen the pension and OPEB liabilities come down. The non-hazardous portion, you know, there was a hazardous and a non-hazardous portion. The non-hazardous OPEB liability is actually an asset currently as opposed to a pension liability. It's actually a net OPEB asset. So that's a very, we net them all on your financial statements just to avoid the confusion, but that one's actually 104% funded. So some of the others are in the 60, 70% funded rate, so, and I think general rule of thumb for pension systems is 72, 75%. They consider that fully funded, even though really 100% is, but they consider 72, 75% a pretty good rate for being fully funded. So they're really getting close to being what they call considered fully funded. So good news on the pension front. We would expect these numbers to decrease again in 2026 for that fiscal year because these are again measured at June 30th, so June 30th, 2025, good market position. You know, the stock market obviously is, the portfolio is based in the stock market, and so when the market performance is up, the pension liabilities are down. Revenues versus expenditures for all your governmental funds, your total revenues of $9.2 million, that's about a $1.5 million increase from the prior year, and really most of that, about over half of that is the $820,000 of the federal funds that you recognized this year. Even though you received the cash a couple of years ago, you recognized those funds this year. So that's really the biggest part of that increase in funds. Expenditures right at $8 million, about a 1.9 million dollar increase from the prior year, and again, you recognize those $800,000 in federal funds and you expended them, so that increase, it shows up there as well. Revenues exceeded expenditures by about 1.2 million compared to about 1.6 million in the prior year. So good delta between your revenues and your expenditures. So total governmental expenditures, again, 9.2 million, about 2.2 million dollar increase. That's a 31% increase. You see property taxes at 2.921, about a $360,000 increase or 14%, and that's, that's all based on the value of your homes, your assessment's going up, so you might be paying a little more because your house is worth more, but it's not from property tax increases. And then also new property in the city has voided that as well. Charges for services, that's trash, your Crescent Springs police contract, things like that, TIF proceeds, that's all up $137,000, about an 8% increase over the prior year. Insurance premium and franchise tax up about $116,000 or an 8% increase. Payroll and gross receipts up about $152,000 or 12%, and a lot of that is, you know, continued payroll increase from workers that work remotely within the city. That's really where a lot of that's coming from. So we're seeing that all of our so-called bedroom communities that don't have a lot of businesses in town, we've seen significant payroll, you see tax increase. And then intergovernmental up the 771,000, again, that's, you're recognizing that ARPA grant. And good interest income at 186,000. Didn't notice that that was an increase or decrease from last year, but those are staying high. That's your cash in the bank making money. Expenditures, right at $8 million, about 1.8 million dollar increase over the prior year, that's a 29% increase. Public safety, about $7,000 increase, just very level there. Contracted services, that's the CVA, President Bill of Fire Authority Protection Agreement and a garbage contract, so that's up about 429,000. And the vast majority of that increase is the CBFA contract, which went up from 660,000 to 1.1 million in 2025. Capital outlay right at 1.8 million, about, I don't think that's a 1.8 million dollar increase, but increase from the prior year, and the, you did more capital outlay this year than the prior year, and again, that 800,000 is part of that. Public works, it's $680,000, and public works jumps all around. I don't want to talk too much about that other than the fact that some, some years you do road overlays, we don't capitalize those, and some years you don't, and so that number kind of jumps around a little bit. Administrative, 557,000, about 20,000 dollars plus in the prior year. Some of the capital outlay projects you did though, you had quite a few this year. The salt garage at 333,000, Valley Trails at 249,000, Rogers Road about 373, New Warner at 689,000, a new dump truck for Buck to drive around in, about 103,000, and then a couple of police cars. So that's where your expenses were. That's the, that's the gist of the overview. Again, no, an unmodified opinion, no significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in internal control and no non-compliance issues, and then you did comply with the federal audit that we were required to do. So a good audit report, and any questions or anything that I can answer?
I do have one I'd like to throw by you. I've had three residents in the last couple of months because of the issue over Fort Thomas, and their question is, how can that happen if somebody didn't take money? What can you tell us about that? It just sounds to me like somebody wasn't watching the books, but that's just a very layman's opinion. I feel very comfortable with our audit that we know wherever Penny is and comes and goes, and I don't have any questions at all, but they have an issue. Why?
That's a, that's an issue that I'm intimately familiar with, first of all. And the, the main issue there is that they had 16 cash accounts that flowed into one general ledger line item, and they had trouble reconciling, doing a reconciliation of those 16 accounts. I can't tell you exactly how long it's been since they'd actually reconciled that account. I know it wasn't reconciled in the last two years, 23, or 22, 23. Definitely wasn't in 23, and I know the, the method of reconc, you know, where you normally reconcile your cash accounts every single month, and they weren't being reconc, this particular general fund cash account wasn't being reconciled at all, even annual, you know, they were trying to do it annually and, and imagine if you have a cash account that's got, you know, 20 automated entries that come in and out of it every month, you know, times, you know, for workers' compensation, things that come out of your account automatically and things that come into your account automatically. And if you're not reconciling, you can't pick those items up, okay? And so they were not, they were not going in and picking those items up, and so the cash account, just things that weren't being expensed that were coming out of that account on a regular basis. And also there were items that were being added to the account that weren't being added. So it went both ways. It netted the 322. So really, it was just the inappropriate accounting of not reconciling that cash account. And a very experienced public auditor with lots of years, she won't want me to say how many, of audit experience and city government finance experience has gone in and looked at that and very thoroughly looked at it, knows about where all, what all that is, you know, where it all came from, but just can't exactly nail it down. So that's why she didn't try to, you know, to really do a reconciliation on it. But they definitely, it's definitely funds that were expended for city purposes, you know, like I said, like workers' comp things that came out for employees, that type of thing. Purchases, grants that came into the city, pilot program, so things that they knew, they expected, they knew that they should have gotten, but that never made it through the reconciliation and didn't get recorded in the books.
So we reconcile every month?
You reconcile, you reconcile every single month.
And then when you do your audit, do you kind of reconcile or reconcile?
We, we don't re-reconcile, no. What we do is we ensure that you do, we review your reconciliations and we tie your reconciliations to your bank account, and we look for things like, we look for things like cash accounts or deposits in transit or outstanding checks that sit on there forever, and we make comments of, you know, you need to have a policy to get rid of these outstanding checks, or we have a deposit in transit that's been on there for six months, why is that like that?
All right, well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Our residents appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's a very, it's, it's hard for people to understand unless you just have intimate accounting knowledge that you can, if you just, if you just don't do something like that, you don't reconcile and you have all this coming and going from your account, you, it can, it can add up quickly, and if, and if it hadn't been done for several years, you know, like I said, do 20, do 240, 300 entries a year, now do that times 10 years, you know, I mean, it could add up quickly.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Good question.
So what question?
And that's all public information, by the way, because I'm not exposing anything I shouldn't talk about.
You go ahead.
We've been talking about finance, and we've talked about it here in committee about how much our reserves should be, and so you said in your comments, you know, three to six months, which is for us 2 million to 4 million.
Right.
That's a pretty big gap for a special city our size that we could do stuff with. So where, where would you want to see us given our books?
I don't have a goal for you. I mean, this is totally your decision as the, as the leaders of the city. You know, you have to decide where you want your, where you're comfortable with your reserve being. I mean, you know what your, you know what your revenue stream is. Your revenue stream here, for instance, is very dependent. You know, you have payroll tax and you have insurance premium tax and you have property tax. And, you know, there's very little risk in your revenue stream going away, okay? Now, if your revenue stream was based on, let me use, let me use a city that has one extremely large manufacturing facility, and most of their payroll comes from, from a, from a manufacturing plant. Well, something happened to that manufacturing plant, you would need some extra, extra reserves to say, wow, something happened to that plant and all that payroll tax went away, we would need a significant reserve to, you know, might need two, three years of operating costs, you know, to having the bank to make ends meet. You're not like that. Your revenue stream is very dependable, and it's very normal thing, you know, and it's based on, you know.
How many, how many different residences?
3,000, okay. 3,000, no, I was close. Three, so 3,000 residences paying, you know, property tax, payroll, some of them paying payroll tax, insurance premium tax, all that type of thing. So it's a very dependable revenue stream. That being said, your risk is lower, so your reserve could be lower. But, but I don't have a, there's not a magic number. It's a number that you have to, as, as leaders in the city have to be comfortable with. You know, just like we're all comfortable in our own individual budgets, you have to be comfortable with a certain number, and it's going to be different for all of us. You have to come to a consensus of what's, what makes sense for the city. You know, there's probably some analytical things you could do, you know, what are some of the emergency things that have happened, you know, you know, what are things that could go wrong? You know, do you have, you don't have like a sewer that can collapse and it would be your responsibility, you know, really? You know, maybe a stormwater sewer, that's only SD1's responsibility probably. So, you know, there's, you know, I'm trying to think of things, you know, things that you own, things that are yours that could go haywire.
We've done some of that, some of those calculations. I think we just kind of had to, like I said, three to six months, for us, that's a wide range, you know, but as long, so I guess as an officer, if you see them, you can do that one.
Absolutely.
Are you, you're going to feel comfortable?
Yeah, I, I, well, I'm going to feel, I'm going to feel very comfortable at three. Absolutely. And especially with your risk. You know, now, like I said, if you had a higher risk, you know, I might advise, hey, you might want to put something away. You may want to, you may want to assign or, or commit funds, you know, for a stabilization fund or a rainy day fund. You can do things like that. They used to call them rainy day funds, but they don't call them, they're called stabilization funds. You could commit funds to a stabilization fund and say, we want to have, we will put a million dollars in this fund and here's, here's how we can spend that, and it's only for certain things, you know. We have an economic turmoil or that certain business leaves down, or we have, you know, infrastructure failure that we need to fix immediately, something like that, you know, you could have, you could have funds set aside for those specific things. Good, very good question. Thank you.
Sue, did you have a question? I thought you started to ask. Oh, okay, sorry. Now that we have the federal audit or the audit done for the ARPA, what happens to that? Does that get sent somewhere or?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they normally have a clearinghouse that they can send it to, and that's not available at this time.
Okay, all right.
The money came and then the, then the instructions.
Okay.
Came much later. They haven't worked that out yet.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for John?
Statement. The Finance Committee just wanted to thank John for his continued partnership and he's been doing such a good job for us.
Thank you.
And then also to recognize, and Scott touched on it, is one of the reasons that the audit has as few changes and as few amendments that probably a lot fewer than you see than most cities is because of the job our staff does. So thanks to Craig and Jennifer and the staff for doing a good job on a monthly basis and keeping us on track, and, you know, the Finance Committee got a little credit for that, being around too and kind of helping to police things and so, you know.
I've actually used Villa Hills as an example of a city that has a Finance Committee, it has a few citizen members that are very experienced, you know, CPAs and accountants and even Jim.
Our whole committee is CPA.
Yeah.
Except the guy who shares it, me. But I got Karen on it, I got Jim Cahill on it, I mean, I got a lot of really smart people on it. So I just get to come up here and read what I write down that they told me to say.
That's what I do, I surround myself with smart people.
So, but, but thank you and.
But, yeah, but I use Villa Hills as an example because the city, it is unique in that you have a lot of citizen members and that, and they're very experienced members, and a lot of cities don't have a Finance Committee that meets regularly and actively and really looks over the numbers, and I think they should, and I think you, you're a fantastic example, one citizen, by the way.
Thanks for, thank you.
I have just a quick clarification on the slides.
If it's okay with you guys, I usually don't take questions from the audience unless it's okay with you. Unless it's okay with you.
How about, we'll let Carol ask the question and you just give me like, you know, a nod if you don't want me to, and then I'll have Carol escorted from the.
Okay.
All right, that's good, we're good.
Oh, I'll, I'll talk all night. If that bothers me, I just generally don't unless it's okay.
I'm fine with it.
This is a little TV question. On contracted services, you said something like 85% of that or something is CFA. What is CFA?
Chris and, Chris, Crescent.
Oh.
Crescent Fire Department.
Contract.
Got it. I was going to say it was Mary Ann.
Yeah, it's Mary Ann.
Yeah, it's totally Mary Ann.
That's your legal.
CFA, not M A S.
That's your, that's your legal retained. No, you're Fire Department.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for being here, John. All right, all right, let's move on to the reports, please. Chief Hall.
For October, we had 1,201 calls for service, and there's the comparison to the cities surrounding us as well. For our, oh gosh, I just messed up. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, we had, for all calls included, we had 43% calls in Villa Hills and 57% were in Crescent Springs. Extrapolate all the, just doing the dispatch calls, 42% to Villa Hills and 58 to Crescent Springs. We had 10 crimes, 23 traffic collisions, 53 citations, we wrote 104 warnings, we had eight e-call responses to incident reports, five domestics and four e-crisises throughout the city.
What's an e-call?
E-call is basically an incident report. So if somebody says, let's say they have a scam that took place, but it didn't take place in Villa Hills, so it's not a crime, but they need to report for their bank purposes, we'll do an incident report for that. Or we have something, a. Or we have something, um, a property line dispute and somebody needs something documented. Yeah, it's not criminal and we don't have a charge, but we'll write something up for them that way that you have a record that we've went out and here's what you said and that way they have a record of it. And there's just a smattering of where the citations and the warrants and charges were. Traffic collisions, as I said, we did twenty-three of them. We had, um, the one, the one I'll make a mention of, I'm kind of doing both dual tiers. Um, I know it's a little bit late and I know it happened in obviously last month. One on Clock Tower Way involved a, a then thirteen-year-old, now fourteen-year-old scooter, or not, I'm sorry, child riding an electric scooter. Um, the child is, uh, obviously recovering, um, and we're lucky with that. It was, uh, life-threatening at the time, uh, serious injuries. The, the premise behind that though is that the person and juvenile that was riding, rode in straight into the side of the car. So fortunately completely at fault, uh, was the juvenile, as we've talked about before, but it is a continuing thing that we are talking about. We've talked about it ad nauseam before in this, uh, in this room as well. And so it's something that we continue to try to police. We try to reach out to the schools and, uh, I do believe, uh, like Villa Madonna, um, is now no longer allowing them to be ridden to schools, which was a request that I, you know, and that's been talked about. So that was something else that kind of helps. Now, I know obviously going into the quarter months, we're not going to see them as much. Um, but again, as soon as springtime comes around, we will see them and we'll continue to attack that as well.
Um, the Villa is still currently allowing.
They are, okay.
Yes, but that hopefully will change very shortly.
I appreciate the update on that. I was told that it was, okay. You would know better than I would then, so sure then. And again, there's the, uh, the collisions that we, uh, we documented. Criminal investigation, Sergeant Lucas. Um, a lot of same cases, a lot of new search warrants and things were being investigated. The one thing that I will mention, um, is a pretty big case, it's getting wrapped up. Um, it was an arrest of a, a subject named Daniel Ty. He's charged with numerous crimes, including child sex crimes, enticing a minor into exploitive, exploitative acts, human trafficking. Um, and yes, that does stem from our area. He was located down, uh, in Georgia in Warner Robins, uh, with the use of investigative tools as well as, uh, flock cameras. We were able to track the vehicle to that area, um, employed, uh, the US Marshals as well. Uh, they were able to pick him up down there. He is still currently incarcerated down in, uh, Georgia and awaiting extradition back, uh, to Kentucky. But kudos to Sergeant Lucas for his work on that. Uh, it's, it's a big case and, uh, a lot of good charges come out of it. Unfortunate for the victims obviously involved, but again, um, I, I can't give enough praise for, for his hard work and effort with that.
He lived around here?
Sergeant Lucas?
Yeah.
Did he live around here?
He lived around here, yeah.
He worked and lived in the area. I do want to speak out of turn on that. Our training for the month covered, uh, our policies six point one and seventeen point five point two, which is critical incident response and body worn cameras and casualty care. Uh, we have, uh, some of our officers attended their, uh, hours of training that's required by the Department of Criminal Justice and Training. Some are broken down to twenty-four hours, uh, for pistol-matic optics, tac med instructor, um, and then others have their forty hour as well. Um, it's just coupled in that we're required to have forty hours of training throughout the year. Um, our, our K nine, Sergeant Dooley and Officer Onyx, had one deployment, one arrest, was credited with two charges and it was in a narcotic search that he was involved in. He had sixteen hours of training. Again, as his breakdown of his training hours that he had, um, in tracking narcotic search and building search. Overtime, we had twenty-five hours in court, nine hours in a search warrant, uh, in investigations, uh, ten hours in range, five hours in investigation, I apologize on that. And we had five hours in late arrests, which were, I believe, all DUI arrests as a matter of fact. So for a grand total of fifty-four hours of, uh, of overtime for the month. Couple announcements that I will make, um, and I'm sure somebody else will cover too. Uh, Christmas in the Park is coming up on December sixth, five-thirty to eight-thirty at, uh, Lou Harfell, uh, Crescent Springs Park. A lot for everybody to come out and join. Um, our Shop With Cop, uh, is actually on Wednesday, December tenth. Uh, again, I know we have wonderful council members that will come help with the rep, rep presence and everything like that. There are finlights and all the plans and members, pretty much I think everybody in our audience here is up there as well. So again, we can't do that enough without you guys. Piggybacking off that, we had a very successful event at the Villa Hill Civic Club for sip and support, uh, the bourbon tasting. Um, I, again, Karen, you were awesome, Mayor, uh, Jennifer, Anna, everybody was absolutely there. The Civic Club, Ernie, Roy. I can't say enough about us coming together as a city, community members to really help get donations flowing for our Shop With Cop and firefighter fund. Um, it does not happen without donations. It does not happen without the community's help and we were able to do substantial help. I can tell you this much, we were able to fund next year with, with the event and the checks and everything that we have. And we'll just continue to, uh, move forward. It's a, we learned a lot of things, I think, with the first, uh, event, uh, for the year and, uh, we're already on the books for next year, uh, with the Civic Club. So again, I love the relationship that we've, uh, continued to foster and we have with them and with all of our community members and their donations. We can't do it without them. So very much appreciated. Uh, the last thing I will say is I do want to acknowledge Sergeant Black. You will see that he is back, uh, from the University of Louisville's Administrative Officers' Course, SBI Southern Police Institute. Um, you graduated, right? Just kidding. He did, he did successfully complete the course. Um, uh, it is a twelve-week, very rigorous course. Um, I'm a little biased because I did attend that as well, so I do know it's a lot of hard work, a lot of effort. Uh, but, uh, I, I hope to, you know, it's a great stepping stone for any of our emerging leaders, uh, in the leadership positions to be able to learn tactics and learn, not just tactics, but, uh, theory, policing, um, all types of budgetary, fiscal, you know, fiscal responsibility, things like that. So, um, congratulations to Sergeant Black for his completion on that. And, uh, I appreciate the council's, um, approval of sending our officers and to improve our officers to be the best possible that they can be so that they're the best for our citizens. Without you guys, I can't do that. So thank you, Greg.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that's my report.
Any other questions or any questions, Chief Hall? All right, thank you. Safety Committee, Ms. Wadsworth.
Um, so I apologize for not having the minutes for everyone. Um, unfortunate demise of my laptop when I went to lunch this morning, I came back with death. So, but I will go ahead and give you, um, the highlights of our meeting. So there was a question about training, um, for the BTO certification, for the breathalyzer, and someone asked if the officers drew blood. They do not the actual blood alcohol test they'll have done, um, at the hospital. So that is not something we take on. Then, um, follow up to the, the child that ran into the car on, um, Clock Tower Way. Trying to figure out the ownership of Clock Tower Way, that road. And it's actually owned by the development company, but they, um, have a twenty-year lease with Crescent Springs in lieu of paying property taxes. So instead they pay the city directly, um, for the use of that. Another thing, again, you know, the lights are really ridiculous on, um, Buttermilk at seventy-one, seventy-five. And so if officers are there and see people blocking, you know, they try and swipe their other red light and then they're blocking everybody else, they will swipe them. The signs on valley trails are up, so thank you to that. And then last of all, if you all aren't aware, um, next to the DAB, um, Dalwick, that's the property that's being developed now. It's going to be housing and apartments. So concern was, we come off of Dalwick U-turn, it's Kittenlands Road, I, is it still Kittenlands? Is it go, okay, that's what I thought. And so the concern was, well, how much is that going to back up things even more with just one stop sign? Unfortunately, um, the company will only be doing, um, road study for Dalwick, not for that. And that's actually in Furlongers. So when that does go up, the traffic is going to obviously be a lot worse there. And then of course the issues that people starting up near the St. Vincent de Paul and getting into that left lane and going all the way down. So that's probably going to, I don't know, probably just lead to, to more accidents and, you know, so people need to be careful there. But that's basically it and I will submit the minutes to Jennifer tomorrow for the official, well, you know, by Friday. I'm picking up the new laptop tomorrow. So, are there any questions? All right.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Um, so we talked about Collins and Amsterdam intersection. Uh, we're getting KYTC to approve funding. They're still working on that on their end. Uh, there is going to be a resolution up tonight to authorize the mayor to, uh, sign a memorandum of understanding either with the engineering company or with KYTC. We're unsure as to who exactly we have to sign it with. KYTC has not answered us. So like I said, you'll see in the resolution, the price is known, so we just need to go ahead and get the mayor, the mayor the authorization to do that. So when it comes in, she can just do it and we can look forward. So that will come up here in a little bit. Rogers Church Bridge, uh, so we met, we had a, a regular meeting, but then we also had another meeting with just the bridge engineers with Compass, that, who were kind of walking over, going through the options and things like that. They still have firm options if we were to like completely do full repairs on it, but the thing they said was, it's going to be enough that, you know, it's going to buy you ten, fifteen years and then you're going to have to replace the bridge anyway. So you probably want, it'd be more cost effective to kind of go ahead and work, start working towards replacing the bridge, especially if you get like a grant through the state. They can help defer a cost for that. So what we're working on right now is we did talk to OKI, you know, we have that grant for the pedestrian side bridge that we were originally going to do. OKI has said that it, we are fine to take that money and apply it to a bridge replacement that would include a pedestrian sidewalk. So what we're talking with now is, so we have that grant, but then the actual state of Kentucky has a program, uh, Community Bridge Replacement Program, but they'll let you do replace, bridge replacements or bridge repairs. It goes through the state. Um, they, it's basically, they authorize a new round basically every quarter and kind of rolling throughout the year. So we're talking to them about what, what we need to do for that. We actually have taken some classes, so I actually sat through a class, uh, last week to get introduced to it. The mayor did as well. And then Buck, I think you had your class this morning, uh, that actually, there's a much more technical class that actually qualifies us for that grant. Um, the thing we're really checking on that is, we already have the one grant from OKI. If we get this other grant from the state, you know, is that okay? How does those work together? Because, you know, you don't want to be caught trying to double dip, so we want to make sure that we're not doing that. Make sure everything's above board, we're kosher saying, here's what we're doing, is everybody okay with this? Um, I, I will say, we're not going to get a free bridge out of this, so just don't think that we're going to use two to get a free bridge. But I think we can really defray the cost down to get it less than, hopefully less than just a roadway. So that's in the works, it's going to, you know, it's, this is going to take some time, but I think we're, you know, I said last month, this is not an emergency repair. It's not an emergency, so this is the time to kind of work through it, get everything aligned, get all the budget aligned and then move forward. So, so we have more firm details, we'll come back on that. All right, now actually I will point, one more thing I will point out, I did put in the minutes. So they did give us an estimate for the bridge replacement, the whole thing, including pedestrian. Um, they're saying six hundred, eight hundred thousand plus sixty thousand in engineering costs. I went ahead and just made it a million dollars just for any overruns and kind of just for budgetary purposes. So that's about what we're looking at before grant, so that would be the whole project. Uh, moving on, Valley Trails Phase One, uh, there's just one little section that's holding water that needs to be repaired. The curve there has been fixed, but the asphalt's still a little down, so it's still ponding a little bit, so that's going to come in and get fixed. Uh, striping was done around the city. Uh, we are now starting design work on, um, not just the second phase of Valley Trails, but also Phase Two and Three. So the way this was originally divided up, we went up to, we go now for Phase Two goes Tanglewood to Dry Creek. Well, Dry Creek to Amsterdam was Phase Three, that's not very far. So we're kind of go ahead, it'd be cheaper and longer if we just go ahead and design the entire thing and then we'll see what the cost estimate comes in, if we want to keep it broken into two phases or we want to just go ahead and do the whole thing since Phase Three is relatively short. Um, one of the things that we need to talk about, that we have to look at is, there's going to be some, uh, significant sidewalk repair. Uh, those of you who have been on the west side of Amsterdam, of Valley Trails going towards Amsterdam, where basically, uh, blockers are down from Am- uh, Maristop. You know, there is some sidewalks there that are effectively ramps.
Yep.
Due to some trees that the city had to take out and so we're going to replace those. The question is, do, how do we replace them? What, what kind of qualifications do we have to adhere to? If we pull it out, do we need five-foot ADA sidewalks? Is it better if we just have our concrete panel company come in and just take them out, put them back in as is? Um, so we're going to get some clarification on that to see how we need to do that. Other things are still waiting, St. Paul's, still waiting, it's been scheduled, um, sidewalks. So panel replacement was ongoing, uh, grinding is scheduled for next week and then that will take care of the sidewalk for this year. Um, and then next year we'll get a new round out. Uh, the other thing, the street condition survey, we're still waiting on results. We have some of the results, I got your email literally today. Um, so we have, we're almost there, we have results. We have a good overview that kind of shows us, Craig sent me a nice map that he's able to see of where the city, the roads are in. Good condit- excellent, good, fair and poor. Um, and a lot of things on the west side are in poor area, like where we did Valley Trails and things like that. So there's, that's probably where our focus is going to be in the next few years, once we, I'll go back, I'll go back in and redo the five-year plan, once we get the full results and I can kind of rank the streets and see what's in worse shape and then we'll, we'll move forward from there. Uh, then the last thing, so actually, uh, Butter Like None of the Safety Committee looked at, we always talk about the butter milk-like timing. Uh, it actually came up in our meeting. So our city engineer, uh, you know, obviously has good contacts with KYTC because he has to work with them so much. So he's going to just kind of inquire for us and see if he can find out anything, maybe get some movement, um, so.
That would be a miracle because we have tried.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I said. I said in the meeting, I was like, I know, I think Chief Call's weather week, every, and, but he's going to see if he can do anything, so. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I have a question about the sidewalk. So I think it was the last part of last week, there was a gentleman out grinding down a sidewalk on my street. So when they do that, does it just have to be even in the middle? Because on the end, by where a yard is, there's still like a gap like that bit. So are they just supposed to make the middle level?
Yeah, they're supposed to grind down the gap, so there's not that gap there. So if it's still, was it somebody, was it a company or do you know?
It was a.
Or just a guy?
It was a guy.
A guy.
So.
Yeah, that's what.
So I don't know.
Isn't it, he hasn't come out yet, right?
So as, so as of right now, the company doing replacements is in town. It, there is generally one gentleman in a red truck and what he is doing is he is saw cutting the panels out, which creates a big mess and a big dust cloud, but he's not grinding or making a repair. He's just cutting out the panels, the seams of the panels, so that they can be ripped out and then replaced. Uh, so, so, so the guy with that machine grinding is step one. He's, he's not, he's cutting out the joints. So he's step one. Step two is another team shows up and they rip them out and then they put in the forms and then step three is, is they pour back the concrete. Now the company that does the grinding will come out with this machine that looks like a giant rug cleaner.
Okay.
Okay? And they will start on one side and they will just scrape that baby right all the way across to the other side.
Okay.
And that will be smooth on both sides and you'll actually be able to see the aggregate underneath the cut.
I can tell you where they, so the first year they did this, they did, they did my street and I can, they made two repairs. And you can definitely see where it's, you know, normal weathered concrete and then there's this, suddenly it gets real lighter and you can see kind of the rocks under it.
Yeah, the rocks.
But now it's smooth and it's flat. So, yeah, you'll, when they come out and grind it, you'll be able to tell where they grinded.
Okay. Because I'm just like.
Are there cones around it?
I'm sorry?
And are there cones?
There was a cone before he did anything. Like, he marked, somebody marked it and there was a cone there. And then, I wasn't there when, I was washing out my window because there was all this dust and stuff. And, and then when I walked later on, I'm like, well, he didn't do this end, why did he do that? So, there's not like, when you said it cut, like, there's not a cut there. Is there supposed to be a cut there?
Yeah. So, you have two panels, right?
Yeah.
All they're doing is they're taking a diamond blade.
Yeah.
And they're shoving it in between the two panels.
Okay.
To cut this panel here, because sometimes when you do the forms, you know, the top, that, that top expansion joint doesn't go all the way down.
Okay.
Through, through the concrete. And so, and so they, they are cutting it to make sure that that section of concrete that they want to remove is totally severed.
Okay.
So, that they can remove it and hopefully without damaging the, the piece next to it.
Okay. All right.
And again, it's a big mess and it leaves a lot of trailings.
Yes.
You know, tailings behind and people calling and playing. And it is a little slick after they do that until it rains. But, they're, they're coming back again and again to actually make the repair.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. It's just like a road where they come through and cut off the road and then it rains and it sits there for a week.
Yeah.
Like we had out here at Valley Trail where we couldn't get the weather to cooperate.
All right. I just thought, you know, we did a poor job or I'm not understanding what is going.
Yeah. Well, we, I mean, especially with the companies, we do kind of, I know Buck and his team are good about going around just making sure that everything's done right. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Thompson? Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next, Public Works Director, Mr. Yelton.
Good evening, everybody. So, lately, we've been on winterizing, put our mower equipment away, put stabilizer in all the gas, pulled the batteries for the cold weather. All of our trucks are up and running, ready, tested. Spare parts, hydraulic hoses, case we get busted line at 2:45 in the morning or 3:15 a.m. So, we're ready for all of that. Angela Court, we did our last concrete tear out and core over there. We did, had Hindi, we tore out the curb, had Hindi pour back the curb, a little bit of asphalt work at the entrance. Homeowners association, oh, homeowners in that area is tickled to death. All the restrooms are winterized. All the soccer fields are, the lines are blown out, all the city islands are blown out. Our Vienna freezer boat in both parks so the toads don't burst over the winter. So, all that's up and running. On top of that, we got a crack ceiling that was supposed to start Monday, but due to the rain, they have not started yet. So, but I'll keep an eye on that. I've got a good list for them. Regularly, we'll be doing that. Other than that, the new batteries in the crosswalks, we put all, we took all the old batteries out and put all new batteries in the crosswalk so they can make all through the winter. They usually last about, close to a year. Other than that, winter training, we did pull all the AED, but winter training, we're doing a lot on that. We did do the 101, 101, yeah, 101 and 102, bridge training. So, all that is complete, me and Cory and a few of you others. Other than that, we had our newest guy do flag and safety zone training. So, he is certified flagger now, which is good. Our year-round seasonal help. Two of them's going to pesticide training tomorrow, all day, an eight-hour course. That, that saved us a lot of money on not having to contract out spring. They do, every do as much house in-house as we can. Other than that, we're, we're ready for winter. Our last, our first outing was two Mondays ago. We spent, we used about ten to twelve ton of salt. So, it went smooth. So, we're ready for Mother Nature. We got basically three hundred on, in the dome and, and I'm working with the, I think our memoranda, our sales rep to get another three hundred on order. So, I'm just waiting on that email to come back and we're ready to roll.
Was that the first time you used the salt dam? I think it's the first time we could salt out of it, though, in the north.
I think so. I'm sure they had ribbon cutting.
Yeah, I know. She was celebrating.
There's that opportunity.
So early, I mean, you know.
Yeah, we were ready. We were ready. It wasn't, doesn't count.
So, yeah, on top of that, cleaning drains, the amount of leaves down with the, the rain, we, we start, that's a daily thing we do, like when we drive, it's, it's constant. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
Up next, Finance, Mr. Bills.
Finance Committee met on Monday, reviewed all of the financials that were sent out to us and went through all the questions and all those questions were answered by staff satisfactorily. So, I make a motion that the October financial reports be accepted as published as they're posted on the city website.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also reviewed the draft version of the audit, which you guys got in your hand and your full report on. So, you know my thoughts, our thoughts on that as a committee. Proud of what came of the audit and proud of all the folks at the city. So, thanks for all your work again.
I have a quick question. Do we need to approve that, the audit, so it can be finalized?
Yes, I would, I would recommend making that motion.
Okay.
Or somebody making that.
Right. I know, I can.
How about I make the motion that we approve the audits as are presented to the council?
I'll second that.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Approval of the October financial.
Yeah, we just did that.
Oh, you voted aye on it. I heard you. I thought you did the audit.
No, I did it financially first. You voted aye on it. Next meeting, next meeting may be held Monday, December fifteenth. I think we're kind of working on caucus and stuff like that. So, I will let you, we'll let everybody know. But, we're still figuring out, I think, whether there will be a meeting or not on December fifteenth, right? Is that what we discussed?
Well, we had, because with the caucus coinciding with Shop With A Cop, what we do is we move it to the first Wednesday of the month for caucus so that who wants to go can go to Shop With A Cop. And then, the December meeting the following week.
Okay.
So, it really depends on what we have going on. Typically, we have the caucus and then if we don't really have anything going on, we cancel the, cancel the December meeting and that way it would make the finance meeting irrelevant at that time.
As of now, it stands for December fifteenth, but it could be, it could be amended and changed. That's all. Unless there's anybody else who's any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Admin Committee, Mr. Stewart.
Since there was no business to discuss, we did not meet this much. I did start the procedure though for Shadow Night and thanks to Scott, who left me good information from those in the past that he's been in charge of. So, I appreciated that. So, about a week and a half ago, I sent the principals the information and they have the, I think Scott, that you put that together last year, the different committees and exactly kind of what they do. So, the principals have got the information. I've already heard from one of the teachers that she's already getting the kids to start the essays. So, I did it a little bit earlier this year because one of the teachers said, can we, can we do it earlier? And I'm like, sure, whatever you want to do, I don't care. You're the ones that have to put it in your lesson. So, I told them that I would be ready to accept them whenever they're finished, but that I asked that they be no later than like the second Friday in January. And I confirmed with Shoshana that it's February, February eighteenth because Scott had already approached her with that last year and that's going to work for everybody. So, I think I'll see some of the essays before Christmas. Wait and see what happens.
What grade is that?
Grade five.
So, this Shadow Night is on the eighteenth of February?
Right.
Thank you.
So, it's St. James River Ridge and Villa like a desk in the past.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Recreation Committee, Mr. Ringo.
We have nothing to report. It's quiet, wintertime, so we're good.
Fields are closed, right?
Fields are closed, but guys took care of all that. Fields are closed for any use, so we're, we're quiet till about February, so.
Because I've seen on the weekends, there have been kids playing soccer and I don't really know how to handle that situation.
Well, yeah.
She's pointing to him, Phil.
All right. All right.
Just run them off.
Okay, with my car? Okay. So, I can just like.
Run them off.
No, I can't do like donuts and try, no, okay. Fine, I'll follow these. Well, I know, I know. Okay, thank you.
Fire Authority?
Fire Authority met this past Monday. Chief reported, well, chief didn't report, chief was gone. They reported fifty-eight fire runs for the month, five hundred and sixty-four year-to-date. That is up one hundred and eight, which is about twenty percent increase over last year. Ambulance runs, one hundred and two in the month, dialled eighteen. That's up forty-four, which is about five percent, which again goes to some of the problems we're having financially right now. The financials were reviewed and approved by the board. Jim Cahill went through great lengths again to update us where we're at financially. He's still running on the well over a hundred thousand and approaching two hundred thousand of shortfall for the year. One of the things that he wants us to stress again, I believe he's going to send the bill out this week, which is normally for the January first quarterly payment. Like to get that in December, in December if possible, folks, so that we're, we're running really close on cash. We have a big payroll coming through, so we're going to need the money to make it through. So, if you could cut those checks early, we would appreciate that. I also wanted to have a little discussion with you all to hopefully get a position, not a decision, because we can make a decision at a later date. But, what we've got going on here now, the two hundred thousand we're talking about is going to come up shore, that isn't going to be something that, going to need a check on June thirtieth. It's going to be something that's going to come up probably the third quarter, you're looking at April first into the fourth quarter, because that's when the funds are going to start drying out. So, that's two hundred thousand that I, so it's going to ballpark and say that's the number we're going to be looking at. We also have the decision to make about in August, when the pumper, eighty-nine thousand dollars for the pumper balloon comes due, whether or not we're going to, you want us to move ahead and finance that going forward for a couple of years and pay it off or pay it off out of reserve money that we have sitting around. We also have the ambulance that's going to come in. That's going to come in some, somewhere around hopefully October, September next year. Whether or not we put a deposit down on it, a hundred thousand or so on our side, or we're going to finance the whole thing. So, what I kind of need from you guys is, what are your thoughts? Where do you, where do you want to go? Do you want to fund this stuff with cash, pay for it on the spot? Or do you want to go to the bank and get a six, seven percent loan and extend these things out? We can do the same on the ambulance too. I mean, it's going to be three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That just means that next year's budget might have a forty thousand or fifty thousand dollar amount in there that's going to be monthly payments on an ambulance.
Just quick clarification. When you say us, you mean the fire authority. So, when you say two hundred thousand, it's not two hundred thousand in Villa Hills, it's two hundred thousand in the fire.
It's, that's going to be split.
And we.
Both of them would be split.
Everything, everything we.
Everything's sixty-four.
We'd be on the sixty percent side.
We'd be sixty side of it. Right.
That's a good question. I mean, I think if we have the money, it'd be silly to pay the interest if we don't have to.
Exactly. I mean, that's what we said. We've got all that surplus and we still took the four percent this year, then use it. I don't think we should finance it if that money's there. I mean, that's the biggest, I think, I don't want to say emergency, but I guess it could be because it's a.
It's one of our core functions, I think that's.
Right, it's critically important, so let's use that.
Finance it if you have to.
All right, is that everybody's position?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, when I said position versus a decision, we're, the fire authority and myself personally are very comfortable with Villa Hill's position. Where you guys are, what's important to you, where you want things to go. And I was pretty comfortable and I need to hear it from you. So, I appreciate that. We need to move it ahead with Crescent Springs because we're not getting a lot of activity. So, what I'd like to be able to do is to have Jim be able to go to Crescent Springs and say, we have put forth a position of where we're going. You may disagree with us and we can reconsider it, but at least now I know where you're coming from. So, I'd like to give that to him so we can move forward. So, I appreciate that. Let me go to the next level though. As I've told you before and Jim has just reconfirmed, we're looking at fifteen, sixteen percent increase in the budget, including the two hundred thousand over what it is this year. And what's happening is, is we originally came to you two years ago and said, eight full-time people. Well, eight people isn't cutting it because we don't have the volunteers to back up, the overtime's going up. We, at one time, I think I even told you that if you fully staffed the fire department, it would take twenty-one full-time people. We're not there yet, but we are looking at a couple of additionals for next year that are going to be necessary. One of the biggest problems we're having is we can't get paramedics. We can't get part-time, we can't get full-time. One of the problems we're having is independents, I think it is, just raised their starting pay to a hundred thousand dollars. That's twenty-five thousand more than we're paying. Everything's going up. Our police is, is having the same problem we are. We also are going to have to do something that's going to probably push that two hundred thousand that I'm talking about because of vacation. When we put the benefit package together, we put a package together which the chief thought at the time was going to work for his staffing, which had four paid holidays. It turns out that most departments have somewhere in the range of nine to twelve and our police get twelve. We're looking at ten right now. The fire authority is going to take a, a look at that next month and hopefully have a position because with Christmas coming up, chief needs to kind of know where to go. That's everything I'm telling you costs money. So, just want you all to be aware of that.
How many holidays are there?
Well, it depends on what you.
Oh, holidays.
Look at the holidays, but I mean, for us right here, I think it's twelve, right?
Twelve, yeah. That's what I'm saying. I think I have twelve, so how does everybody get twelve?
I don't know if you work for a bank.
Right. I mean, but that's not what this is.
Well, but fire departments, there's some that have, like Fort Mitchell, I think, has nine. They just, there are some that you don't get.
Right.
And they're just regular days. So, you know, we need to, what, what we're running into, same thing she's, here's running into with the police is, is that people will change jobs and say, I want that extra day and they'll leave. So, then you lose all that money you trained them with and you had them on staff and then you got to replace them. So, we're going to have to be competitive and competitive is a big word for money. It's all it is. And that's why I was kind of so adamant about the four percent and reserve, because this stuff's going to cost us money. I'm going to tell you, the fire department side is going to, it's going to go up until we get the balance that gets us in some stability. And while we have stability with the police department, you're still going to have to have the competitiveness, or we're just not, you're going to constantly be losing one And while we have stability with the police department, you're still going to have to have the competitiveness, or we're just not, you're going to constantly be losing one or two every quarter. So it's just a conversation we need to keep fresh. So anyway, thank you for the position. I, I will pass that off.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, you go.
No, you spoke first, go ahead. So, let's say that we, we're in a cash position to do something like that, so we, we could say, okay, we could, we could step up and pay cash for the thing. What if Crescent Springs can't?
Well, then, then we're going to have to back off, and maybe we do go to financing, that's all.
But, but what I mean is, is like, what the fire, what the, what the Fire Authority does, the Fire Authority does. In other words, like, we can't pay cash unless Crescent Springs can pay, can't pay cash?
Well, I think, I think you could. If, if our finance guy worked the numbers out, you probably could do that. Because you could put 100,000 docked down, let's say, and let's say the other city didn't want to do that. Well, their amount would have to be bumped up for that one segment of the budget.
Okay.
For that city. But it's complex, and I'm hoping that we'll all be able to agree together. But the board itself can say that we're voting to pay the money upfront. Well, that doesn't force the city to take our vote. I mean, remember, all of our money at the Fire Authority comes from the cities.
Right.
So we really are kind of beholden to whatever the cities decide they can and can't do.
Okay. And so, we, we were talking, Jim's talking about this in finance.
Yeah.
And he said, I think one of the things he said, he, he kind of went over the numbers, but he said he doesn't even really know how much to ask for at this point.
He doesn't, right. And that's why I said the first thing he knows he has to ask for is that check in late December, because he's already saying I'm going to come close, but just to make the December payroll. So once you pass that, though, that's when the money starts falling off.
So I guess my question, really two questions. About what time next year do we think we're going to know how short we're going to run, or is it just going to be a tally that we just, you report on, and we just cut a check in June, or?
I thi, I think what you're going to see is, is that as every month goes by, when you start approaching, getting into March, I think we're going to know whether we're going to need some money at that quarter, and then the rest of it at the end of June to be able to make the June payroll, to be able to fund that. That's what it's all about.
All right. And then, I guess, next question, and so what, about when are you going to, will you all have the proposal of, here's how we're going to have to redo, redo the staffing levels, and?
Well, that's, that's what we're currently working on. So, again, we hope to get the holiday piece nailed down in December if possible, no later in January. Remember, Jim, the way the inter-local agreement was put together, we at the Fire Authority have to present a budget to the two cities in January, and there's a finance meeting that comes together. So the staffing, we're working with the chief now to see which is, what way do we need to go. Is it, is it number 12 now, or is it 10 instead of 8, and what's that going to cost us next year? So that, we should know that for, for the, our city budget when it goes to the Budget Committee in January, where they come out, at least, maybe, there won't be a decision, but at least the cities will know where it's coming from. Anything else?
Yes, so a woman called me and asked about the community room that's at the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
And she's, and I guess she had gone to the open house last year and whatever, and she said she thought that that room was supposed to be available for people in Villa Hills and Crescent Springs, like, they have some kind of ladies' social club that gets together every once in a while, and they were told, no, you can't use that room. That's not available to people to use. And I said, I don't know anything about that, and I don't know, Scott, if you do or not.
I? I know that we said it was available for the cities to use.
Right.
But I don't believe it was for the general public to use.
They probably don't have the correct insurance for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors with that. There's, there's access to the rest of the fire department, that, you know, all those type of things. And there's not enough manpower to really police that while they're, they're there. Particularly, they get a call, the place would be empty. So, again, I think, you know, it was limited to city activities, city events, cit, whatever city, Shop With A Cop, perfect example, right?
Maybe that wasn't made clear.
It is made, it is for the public to the extent that it is a tornado shelter, okay? It is a place where people could go into the basement in the event of a weather situation.
Okay.
But not for gen, not for general.
General meetings. Okay, I'll explain it.
Next meeting is December, Monday, December 15th at 6:00 a.m.
Any other questions from Mr. Ringo? All right, thank you. City Attorney, Stuart.
I do not have a report tonight. I'll just address legislation.
All right. City Clerk, Ms. Lipson.
My, my thing is just an update on tax payment. As of tonight, we are at 78% collected. I'm waiting on a check. Tomorrow, it should be here from CoreLogic, which is one of the bigger companies. That'll put us at 79% collected, plus any additional payments that come in overnight and everything. So just a reminder to residents that tax bills are due November 30th. You can pay it online on our website by, with credit card. There's a 3.5% fee. You can pay it at Heritage Bank, which is located across from Oriental Walk. Now, they did move. And then you can also come into the city building, pay with check or cash in the city office. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Administrator.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a friendly note that in your packet is the annual ethics report that is required by our ethics ordinance, and so it is in, in your packet. We do have a caucus scheduled for December 3rd, and it is a regular meeting, because we made that change to our meeting schedule a couple of years ago. That means that we can vote on things if it's put on the agenda. Now, such short notice between now and December 3rd might mean that I don't have anything to put on, but if there would be something that we would need to put on, I'll ask the mayor if, if we can do that, simply to clear the deck for a December meeting cancellation if, if necessary. And then finally, all the kudos and accolades that John Chamberlain gave staff is very much appreciated. I cannot tell you how thankful I am that we have Jennifer Lipson as our city clerk and finance officer for all practical purposes. You all do not understand how many hundreds of individual transactions are input into our finance system in a week that we then have to track. And so we're, you're talking daily, dozens of transactions that go in every single day, and over the course of 365 days a year adds up to two budget adjustments, one of which was not our fault. You know, it was a change in Gatsby rules. So I, so that's kudos, and we, we couldn't do it without, without Jennifer, and I, and I do felt like I needed to say that. Other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'll try to my best to answer.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report, so we can move on to legislation.
So you only have two things on for legislation tonight. The first is discussion and approval of draft municipal order 2025M, a municipal order of the city of Villa Hills and Canton County declaring surplus property. This is for one of the SUV cruisers that the police department no longer needs.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion.
For a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The only other item is discussion and approval of draft resolution 2025G, a resolution of the city of Villa Hills and Canton County authorizing the mayor to sign an MOA with Palmer Engineering for the completion of an environmental study related to the Collins Amsterdam Intersection Project in an amount not to exceed $78,100.
Does this money come out of the grant money, or is this money that we have to fund ourselves?
This is out of town.
This is out of town, so it's not part of the, the grant.
And, and I do want to note that a amended version was set placed at your desk tonight. We're adding the, the phrase Palmer Engineering and/or the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, simply because we did not get a response, a timely response back from transportation.
They don't know yet, so we're going to go ahead and put them up.
Who we're actually going to sign with.
Regardless of the amount of my state. And how did that amount of mine look? Was that just a percentage or something? It's, there, since there, since Palmer is a state project, I hear there is a set fee.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stuart. All right, moving on. Any old business? Any new business? Any general comments from council and staff?
5 o'clock on Wednesday. The ten for your gift wrappers, if you can make it. Make it right now.
Do we know how many families, or how many kids?
No, I, chief, chief out there? Are you walking away?
We're talking about Shop With A Cop.
I apologize. I, I just want to know. What I miss?
How many families this year?
The plan is 10.
How many we have left, Jim?
10.
Okay, cool. All right, so.
We usually go between 10 and 12. That's the happy number that we have, but they've got 10 that they've selected, and we might add 11, and then they show 11, too. But 10 is the plan at this, right now.
Okay, thanks.
5 o'clock, then.
5 o'clock, then, so start in, because that way you might come anywhere.
We'll pick them up about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and then we'll run lights and sirens down Collins and Mother Mill, go towards Walmart, get them in time to, to shop and get everything together, and then we'll come back up to the firehouse and finish up the night.
Wednesday at 10.
Wednesday at 10.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Any public comments?
We're still looking for volunteers for Christmas at the park.
Okay.
Still need volunteers for responsible seventh and eighth graders, high school college students qualified for community service hours. When is the report time? We need them probably, start at 5:30, probably 5:00. So 5:00. All right, I'll take that, get them announced.
I will, I will volunteer.
Well, we need Santa's little helper. You can make you an elf.
Little helper, excuse me, I'm not exactly.
Yeah, we can make you an elf.
An elf, yeah. I actually, I have an elf costume, that's the, that's the.
I don't think I would throw that out there, really, would you?
For, for St. Joe's, though, can I, like, is there somebody that, can I have, like, my wife call Anna or something to try to get information to?
Oh, yeah.
Tell Villa, to tell?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what I should ever do?
Perfect, yeah.
She'll be happy I did.
Yeah, yeah.
And thank you for the reminder. Any other public comments? All right, executive session?
Nope.
Nope. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second, I'm second, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
See you next month.